Tomorrow's agenda. Hearing none, I look for a motion. Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Setz, seconded by Ms. Cummings. Approve the agenda with the change in order of moving G after action item D and new business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh voice vote. Brings us to the minutes from the regular board meeting from Wednesday, October 11th. Open session. Any noted corrections or changes? Two said minutes.
Well, there were corrections made to that seven minutes because I think last week, last week we tabled it because I was not known in. I actually wasn't present, so I would move.
Monica, who's second?
Okay, I've got a motion by Ms. Quong, seconded by Ms. Cummings to approve the meeting minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh voice vote. Brings us to the minutes from the regular board meeting from Wednesday, November 18th. Any corrections here?
Monica, who's second?
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Setz, seconded by Ms. Cummings to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh voice vote. Action on the minutes from the policy committee meeting from Monday, November 27th. Any noted changes or corrections here?
I will move to approve as presented.
Monica, who's second?
Motion by Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Quong to approve as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven oh voice vote. Brings us to a presentation to the board. I will turn the floor over to Ms. Monica Hauser from Hawkins and Ash to discuss our 2022-2023 audit report. You have the floor, Monica.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. I'm going to go through the audit. Do you have the audit in front of you or do you want me to pull up on the screen? What's the preference?
Either way, all board members have it on. Yeah, so you can just walk us through it.
Okay, and I'm not going to go page by page. So just going to give a very brief overview, highlight a few pages, and you guys can ask questions as we go through. So I'm Monica Hauser, I'm the partner in charge of your audit from Hawkins and CPA. When we do the audit, we do two pieces, the audit. We do the financial statements, or that's where we're rechecking the numbers, making sure the accounting is correct, and then we do the single audit. And that's for state and federal grants. We have to test a certain amount each year and, you know, test certain programs. So we're going to start with the financial piece, talking the numbers, and then we'll end with the compliance stuff. That's at the back of the report. So I'm going to start in the financial statement, the figure of the two books that we have to look through front of you. Page three, so this is our opinion. It's at the top of page three, kind of at the start of the report. This is what you hire us to do, to give an opinion on your financial statement. So we've issued an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statement, so that just means that everything, all the numbers are fairly stated, are our correct according to it. So then we're going to skip into page six. It's the management inspection and analysis. So I'm not going to go and read through all of this for you, but if you're looking for a good summary of kind of the big changes from year to year, that's going to be summarized in this MPA or management discussion analysis. So that's pages six through 11. So if you want to take a gander at that and read through that, that might give you some extra insight if you wanted. Okay, we're going to skip all the way to page 14. So in the middle of page 14, we're going to focus here on fund balance. So we, the split interest tends, from auditor perspective, we tend to focus on the general funds. That's, you know, kind of your general operating fund. When we report it here, though, it is reported with, so it's Fund 10 and 27, the specialized funds combined. So that's how CPI requires us to report it, so that's why it's reported that way. And every, all of your other funds are all lumped together and called non-major governmental funds. So the detail on those, what breaks, we break out all those funds is on page 46. And I'll point that out kind of as people through the booklet here, but I just wanted to make a note that there's, you know, 1.16 million of fund balance there, but that's all for other funds and restricted for other purposes. Our general funds, we have an under 1000 fund balance of 2,620,000 worth of funds. So each year we talk about what is the right, we look at this as a percentage of your total expenditures in the general fund for the year. There is no magical number. If you've heard me talk in the past, I usually say, if you're not having to short-term borrow, you're probably at, have a pretty good fund balance. And I think, you know, we're in that position compared to other districts who are having to dwell there in short-term borrow before they get their gate payment, you know, to work it and good in that respect. This year, the percentage is 21.6. Last year, it was 34.5, but last year had a big spike, a big increase. So just keep in mind that our fund balance, kind of as things happen and we have some bigger expenditures, that number is going to go up and down. You know, it seems like we're staying at least at 20%, which seems, you know, fairly reasonable in my opinion. So that's the fund balance piece of it. If we skip over to page 15. Again, this is our revenues and expenditures statement. And general fund, you can see there, we'll go all the way to the bottom, the net changes fund balance. So like I said, general fund had a decrease this year of 932,747. Last year, we had added 738,000 to the fund balance. So, you know, we had a pretty big bump in expenses this year. So that's just, you know, how it works out. So that's the general fund. Then if we kind of skip through, I just want to point out in the footnote to the financial statement, page 25. This is our bill fours on long-term obligations, again on page 25. And so it shows our outstanding debt, we have some premiums to spend down, which has this FDICA or civita liability, which is new. That was a new GAZB standard that we had to implement this year. Based on, so FDICA is subscription-based IT arrangement. So if we are purchasing a software or an IT type of thing and we have a business that 's been in multiple years, we have to do a calculation and then that gets amortized. So that's what that balance is there for. And you can see it's not a very large balance, but we had to report it. The biggest thing you're, what I'd be looking at is your general obligation debt. So at the end of, or at 6:30 of 20, you had 13,120,000 outstanding. And you can see at the bottom of the page has the maturities there as to when that's going to get repaid, the principal interest breakdown. Your margin of indebtedness is in the middle page, that just shows how much borrowing capacity you have yet. Okay, that's debt. Now we're going to skip back to page 35. And this is our, note nine on page 35, this is our fund balance breakdown. So I had mentioned that we had that 1.16 million of other fund balances. So that's broke out here. So some of it's food service, some of it's community service, Special Revenue Trust, or the Fund 21, if you're familiar with those district's fund numbers, and then debt service. So you can see that the breakdown of what's out there to be spent on those purposes. I'll remind you on food service, many districts are still spending down some of the reserves we built up from some of that COVID funding, or just the district doing a good job of running their food service program and building up a fund balance. We get to a point where we spend that down, one tend to have to go back subsidizing that. So I'm going to keep that in mind. Okay, we're going to skip a bunch more pages now, and we're going to go to page 47. So page 47, this is a breakdown of all those other funds that lumped in that total non-major governmental fund category. And you can, I just wanted to point out that where that details that, if someone was curious, you know, as to what was going on in one of those other types of funds. All right, page 48 and 49. We're going to kind of flip over to that single audit or compliance item audit that we talked about. Page 48, this is our schedule of expenditures of federal warrants. So if we have over 750,000 of federal warrants each year, we have to do this extra federal compliance audit. This year, our total expenditures were 1,391,000. So we're spending down a lot of the stabilization or ESSR funds. So this year, 598,000, what were those ESSR funds? So we could easily give them all that threshold in the future as those funds get fully spent. So I just wanted to point that out, that these are the grants that the district gets. Page 49 are the state grants, and then the state tells us which funds have to be tested every year, and then which ones we kind of rotate through the test. And then if we go to page 55, at the back of the book. This is our schedule of findings and questions clause. So this tells the major, in the middle of the page, it tells what federal programs we had to test. And we tested the education stabilization or ESSR or ESF fund and the child nutrition cluster this year. For state grants, we tested the general aid cluster. Okay, then on page 56. These are the findings we had. So we had no compliance issues with those grants, just had some internal disposable items that we've noted, and the first two are the same as we've had for many, many years. It just has to, all of my small school districts have this finding. So the first one is something from financial statements. And again, this is because you hire us, it's part of our audit, we use the financial statement preparation for you. If you had somebody on staff that could prepare the financial statement, we would take this out. So that's something to work forward to get rid of that. The next one on page 57, material audit adjustments. So again, this is that finding in past years. We are really close to getting rid of it. There was just one entry this year that caused us to continue reporting this, but we went from 14 entries in the past down to four, so that's very good. This happened at one of them is material, so we need to report the findings. And then the last finding at the bottom of page 57, this is a legal compliance, that if you are, if you overspend your general fund budget in total, then we have to report that. So again, this is something that a lot of my districts have. They just say it's not worth going and doing an extra budget amendment to get rid of this. So there's a finding, that's very common. So that's the financial statement. The other smaller booklet is what I call the management letter or required communications to those charged with government. This is required communications to the board. It would identify any problems we had, if we had any during the audit, which we did not have any. I'll just point out a couple of significant things are what I think are the biggest items in here. On page three, we do talk about that we adopted under the significant accounting policies. It's noted that we adopted a new accounting policy, and that's in relation to that FDICA or civita, the new GAZB, we had to report new items this year. On page four, this is where we talk about uncorrected misstatements and then corrected misstatements or those audit journal entries. So those are reported just a few pages back. Under appendix A are the adjusted journal entries. Like I said, we went from 14 last year down to four, so that's very good. I see really good effort, staff making sure that we're getting things cleaned up prior to the audit. So kudos to the staff for getting right for after having things done. And that, and that appendix is the uncorrected misstatements, and this has to do with our leases, for those new standards last year that we had to implement. And we just said, we didn't want to report all the leases on the district's books. So we're just, it wasn't significant enough that we had to report it, but it's big enough that we have to at least report it that we passed on it. That's what this is in here for. That's all I have unless there are any questions or anybody wants me to talk further on anything else.
Need more than your questions?
Thank you for that good summary, Monica.
Well, pal, if anybody has further questions, please reach out to me. I can help answer anything needed.
Thank you. Anything, Monica?
Thanks, Monica.
Thank you as well.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night.
All right, moving on. Board reports. Two representatives for board reports. We mean, I think we have this Quong here for our report. You have the floor.
Hello, everyone. I'm Edith Quong. I'm a junior this year at Waterloo, and I'm beginning like a brief synopsis of what's going on at Waterloo right now. We're having our holidays here at week next week, and the student council's planned a new Earthspun activities for the students for this period. We have dress-up days and flex time activities. The dress-up days are Monday being PJ Day, Tuesday being Color Wars, Wednesday being Jersey Day, Thursday being Festive Friday, and then we go on to school on Friday. And the flex time activities, some of them include relays, guess the movie, finish the lyrics, musical chairs, and a very own rendition of the 12th Day of Christmas, where each of the grades is in charge of picking a number and finding something that they think relates to it in school. The FFA, FPLA, and NHS went to the Riverwalk Senior Living Home last Friday to make holiday decorations for the residents. They had a ton of fun and it was a great opportunity to connect with our community. NHS volunteered yesterday at Jefferson County Christmas Neighbors to help organize donations for the holiday season. They had a holiday gift offering event in the community rooms past Sunday, and it was successful and a great way to help members of our community. They also had a blood drive a few weeks ago with over 70 people donated. The Banding Choir will have their holiday concert next Tuesday at 6:30, where the Banding Choir will be performing holiday music. And a couple winter sports updates. The boys' basketball team has had one of the best starts to their season in recent years, showing the record of 4-2. They will play again next Monday against Columbus, and then Thursday at Ex-Link Mills. The wrestling team has had a great start to the season. They wrestled last night and won two of the three duels, and they'll have their large home meet on Friday where they hope to continue to go success. The girls' basketball team has had a very successful start to the season. They are currently 3-3 in the recently beat CoraCon and will take on Jefferson next Monday as they hope to continue with it. And that's all I have for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports, we have, next on the docket is Mr. Craig, because our policy committee meeting report.
The policy committee met, and we reviewed, I'm sure whatever it says, I got all we know, we all need policies. We reviewed, we talked about them, sometimes we cross out some lines. They go back for, working with the OLLA, it's a company which does over half the schools in Wisconsin, and we're one of them. Got much more to add?
Charlie, anything to answer?
No, I think we're going to approve the first reading of 3,000 and then 6,000 later, is that correct?
Any questions, board members?
I see you have three of them crossed, or aligned through. Are those going to be eliminated, or are you giving something?
We requested additional information or verification on those, and we do not have a right. So when we get to new action items, we can either proceed and look to identify them and verify them on the second reading, or we can pull them out, bring it back again for verification. Thank you, Mr. Craig. Moving right along, approval of bills and vouchers. We have the treasurer's report, the listings of disbursements through November 30th, and the district receipts. For anyone who has outstanding questions that are not answered prior to the meeting. Hearing none, I look for a motion.
I also move, second.
Okay, just for clarification sake, you're moving to approve all three treasurer's report for the listing of disbursements and the district receipts. Correct. All right, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Yurgis to approve all three reports, excuse me, all three reports as presented. Peter Wopel, vote. Yurgis, yes.
Quong, yes.
Snyder, yes.
Sett, yes.
Quong, yes.
Means yes.
Motion carries on the seven oh voice vote. Any legislative updates to share, any board members or just any? Nothing? Moving right along, any announcements? I did pick up in our student report that we've got a concert next week. Hopefully that gets posted on the district website so we can have some attendance. Tomorrow night at 6:30. All right, that'll bring us to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to provide public input this evening? Anyone out in, attending virtually? Okay, moving right along. Go into new business. First order of new business is staff positions as presented in your informer packet. We have a resignation. Chris P. Kittenson. Any questions? Discussions?
Was she brand new this year?
No. Eight years in the district?
I'll move to approve the staff positions as presented with that resignation.
I'm sorry. I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Quong, seconded by Mr. Setz to approve de-staff position. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh voice vote. Item B is a discussion item on the audit report. We received the presentation and packets prior to the meeting with all this information. Is there any further discussion regarding the audit by the board?
I will say that I ran an entire audit, every last page, 95% of the lines. Very thorough. I think our, I always believe we should run our business for our purpose, not necessarily for that of the lawyer or the accountant. And I think we're doing a fine job of that. We had four questionable items brought up at the end, seven that could be put in less than the 14 or whatever it was a year ago. And I kind of find it ironic that when you hire them to do something, they have to write that up because there's nobody that they're looking, that they're reporting to them. Whereas if you had the qualified accountant that could enter the data and then they reviewed it, it would not be a mark. So, and that was mentioned there in that last closing, one of her last closing comments. So I just think we're in good position. Granted, we lost a little, some money this year as compared to going in, but I'm happy with the audit and what we saw, and I will move for its approval.
Technically, we don't have to move to approve anything, it's just a discussion. But appreciate your motion.
Well, all right.
Any other discussion? I would say thank you, Susie.
Yes, Susie.
It's always good to get a good clean audit. Okay, move right along. We'll go to action item C, the Scholarship Supper Endowment Fund as presented in the board informer. It is requested that the board approve the establishment of the Waterloo Scholarship Endowment Fund and the fundraising efforts that will lead towards building of a fund for disbursement. Any discussion regarding the establishment of the Scholarship Endowment Fund?
Who's going to be the administrator of the fund?
Administrator.
We'd love to have board members, you know, work alongside of us with the fundraising efforts and the establishment of the endowment fund. I think that would be great. The district office will take the lead on it, but we'll certainly be soliciting help from anybody and everybody that wants to get involved because many hands like make life work, so. We don't have any money to give out yet, so we don't have to worry about that.
Any further board discussion?
I would move to approve the Scholarship Supper and the Endowment Fund.
No second to that.
So I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Quong, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve as recommended establishment of the Waterloo Scholarship Endowment Fund and the fundraising efforts that will move towards said fund. All those are All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven oh vote. Action item D, the 2023-2024 District Field Trip Plan. Got it copy here in your packet. It's recommended that they be approved as presented. Is there any questions or discussion surrounding the field trip plan?
This is just a deadline for the field trip. I mean, can we approve those already? So what is this? This is a deadline to make a lot of board field trips.
Let Mr. Henny speak on.
I have a question here.
How are you going here? You've already officially approved the field trips for this year. This is the 2023-2024 Strategic Plan. So Mr. Seth was just inquiring as to.
So we approved the overnight field trips. These would be, these wouldn't necessarily just be overnight trips. These would be all field trips in the district. And it's more specifically like the academic related ones in each grade level, co-curricular, you know, can, are also academic, but no, this isn't an all encompassing list of every club and organization. It's just more our effort to show the community and show the board, you know, what would happen if a student spends their entire career in Waterloo, what kinds of experiences they would be a part of. It's just making sure everybody from all the grade levels and all the buildings sees what's going on so that we can collaborate and coordinate to give the best experiences to kids.
Any other questions?
I'll hold the approval of the 2023-2024 District Field Trip Plan.
I'll second it.
Who wants it?
All right, chance winner. Got a motion on the floor by Mr. Seth, seconded by Mr. Yurgis to approve the district field trip plan for 2023-2024. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven oh voice vote. Brings us to our interjected discussion on the master plan. Skipping your packets to item G. As listed in your informer, the district officials met with Cameron Construction and Point of Beginning Engineering Firm, discussed the board's wishes to develop a master plan. As you can see here, the cost to complete said plan, I don't know if we have all of the details as far as what that includes, but it's going to start at $7,500. But if you would look to commit to them on the future work that will be included as comped. So discussion here on, from the board on where we'd like to go. I believe how we got here is it was deemed it was a good idea to have a master plan, lay the said fields and our outdoor classrooms on the ground. So we have a master plan and technically do not have one at this time. So what are board members' thoughts here?
So there should be a plan that would encompass baseball field, softball field, potential soccer field and outdoor, foreign facilities. Those things that would.
Yes, that's my understanding. Now, the level of planning, I think, is still up for. Because this doesn't include, obviously, to go out, study, environmental studies or anything of that nature. More so laying the size requirements out on our current property.
Size requirements, elevation study.
And I don't know how much of an elevation study we'd get, like.
Probably right off the top of your head.
Sure. Any other board inputs?
Is that the only, did we have a master plan? The only company or the other companies out there that do this besides Kramer and Point of Beginning Engineering?
Yeah, there's all kinds of companies. We can, we can get more bids for you if you want. They, they will, of course, do it for free, but then they want the engineering work if we move over to any project, which we would definitely want to clarify what their fees were for the engineering work. So, you know, I think there's a number of ways you can go about it. Either we can, you know, solicit more bids and see who we can get to do it the cheapest or if you, you know, want to ask more questions of this group and see how it would work, you know, and what kinds of fees they would be charging, you can do that. So the, the reason it's on the agenda tonight was not necessarily for you to approve, you know, this company or move forward. It was just so that you could plan another meeting to ask those questions that you're asking.
Kramer goes have like a fee like ten percent or twelve percent or fifteen on their drawings and that kind of stuff.
Um, right now, you know, Kramer was the one that made the introduction to us, but they wouldn't necessarily have to be involved at all. We certainly have a relationship with them, so if we have any general contracting work that needs to be done, I think they'd like a chance to do it. But they, they don't have to be involved at all. They worked with this company before. They've had good experiences with them, so they just helped us make the connection because they knew the board was interested in having some discussions.
They probably can't commit to Kramer for not doing work because in case I do not have a RFP, correct?
We have to do what?
We question proposal, send out a bid.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, the recommendation is that the board schedule a special meeting to review, figure out what services we want and what level of master plan we would like to determine. I would agree with Jim. We would want more than one estimate, so I would like to see if we could schedule a meeting with minimum two companies and get two proposals at the same evening while we're talking about it. Big game plan together.
I think they would almost have to.
Well, there's a certain amount of data they can pull from this map. Any further thoughts?
Is it something we want to do in springtime when you form, like Jim says, two off properties? Probably want to get everybody on the same page.
Probably spring is better if we've got a nice fall right now, but we might change in a week.
Good. So on your own.
Yeah. Yeah, this makes sense to me. I know we're about with any number of people beyond the sole proprietorship you need to really be at and have a solid plan, so I think this is a good idea.
Any thoughts, Bill or Sarah?
Yeah, no, I definitely think we should get more than one bid and kind of to your point, maybe in springtime you go out and have them come and be able to walk it and then bring it to us, meet with the companies. I don't know, we did that with the snow people. It was nice to actually hear.
Hear a proposal?
Yes. Instead of reading about it, it's always nice to have them come and meet and discuss it in person.
Okay. Someone like to frame out the motion?
I'll make a motion that we discuss a master plan and we'll ask the young people to solicit a potential better engineer.
Oh, sorry, cut you off.
So in the meantime, now you, you don't want us to contact anybody or, I'm just not sure I understand what you want us to do. Just going to wait until spring?
I think we wait until the board has to.
Yeah, because if you want me to get bids, I just have to know what to tell the company to bid on, right?
Yes, well, we have to have them come here, so I would say we're going to wait until spring and then have them come here and then get the bid proposals, whatever they are, and then be able to have them, right?
Yeah, have a committee meeting, a grounds committee meeting in the springtime, so you have to listen and discuss the master plan and.
So at that point in time, then you tell us like what you want in the master plan and then we would put that in the RFP?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure I don't not do something you guys want me to do, so.
So before we move, so I've got a motion on the floor from Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Ms. Cummings, and to further, I guess, clarify. Your proposal is to wait until spring, can we put a timeframe on that?
Let's schedule a committee meeting in March.
February?
February. Yeah. March is starting off.
So we'll schedule a committee meeting in February to get together to develop a plan on how to proceed with the master plan.
The committee being building your grounds committee?
Yes. Is that a fair assessment? And you still second that with the clarification? Okay, any other discussion before we go to a vote? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven oh vote. All right, back to action item D, converting onsite baseball field to a softball field. Yeah, listed in your informer, we have a packet or a letter, excuse me, that speaks to the Title IX requirements in school. Hopefully all board members are able to review that letter. So it's recommended here that the onsite baseball field be compared to a softball diamond. You also have a estimate for Midwest athletic fields in your packet. And there's up for discussion here on this conversion.
My first question will be, where are we getting the money?
So we have a couple ideas for you. One, we have roughly $100,000 that you have already approved to be spent on flooring across the district and areas that need repair or flooring. So you could hold on a portion of that project and reallocate that towards baseball softball field issues and then just do flooring either next year or whenever the next opportunity arises. The other thing that you could do is spend fund balance. You just heard from Monica that we have a fund balance. It's certainly, you know, not something that we want to get into a short-term borrowing situation again or with the district in a predicament, but there's probably enough room there to do a project of this size and scope. But if you, you know, want us to do it, we can put our heads together and get you more options also, but I think that the answer to your question is we have to rearrange stuff from somewhere to, we don't just have it sitting there with no purpose.
Okay, my next question is why are we doing this?
Um, well, I think it's to address the Title IX issue.
Well, in that letter it says, or some things in that letter that was for the Title IX ever received are not true. The last part is it says they would meet with us and that Title IX people or those who are able to meet with us and discuss to us. I think we should leave them before we spend the money.
So I did have, I did have a worksheet at your table when you arrived tonight that kind of outlines each of the Title IX concerns that have been raised and what's being done, you know, at this point in time to address those. So the administration, you know, is on top of each one of those concerns and feels we need to have a good pathway to rectifying them. We do not have, you know, we do not have a plan at this current time or, I used to say we have a plan, but it would be more in the board's hands to address the field issue. So do you, since we're on top of eight out of the nine things, do you still want to meet to discuss that, Jim?
Yeah.
With the whole board or?
Whole board would be good, I guess.
Mr. Henny, can you just clarify this, the bid that we've received for the field to convert it, but then allow the field to be used for both baseball and softball? It would just be softball.
I mean, it wouldn't stop the baseball team from going out there and using it as a green space, but the.
They can't use it as a field, so who is that impacting if you take the, the baseball field, the way that you practice is on there right now?
Baseball.
I know, how many teams? What are we talking, are we talking one group, two groups, three groups, four groups?
Uh, in general, it's our J D baseball field. Not saying that the varsity doesn't go out there from time to time also, but in general, it's our, considered our J D baseball field.
Play, play even there too, or is it just practices?
Is it possible for them to let them play their games and have their practices at the park?
They have one field at the park that is used for baseball. The rest, I understand, are for softball. Is that, am I correct?
Yes.
Only we have one.
You only have one baseball field.
They, they play, they currently play on the same place?
They try to, yeah.
Do they have, do most other schools have two separate fields so that they can have the same night?
It depends on who we play. There is some practice of that, you know, varsity plays one place and J D plays the other, but that increased transportation cost, but that is done. So it just depends on the school we're playing.
Well, it could be done. Obviously, other schools are doing it the same day and they have that issue too, where they have one field.
Or one game first and the second game afterwards.
If feasible, it could be done. Then the issue is, do you want to convert a baseball field here to a softball field? What's that, do you have an idea what that cost is?
Yeah. Sixty-two or sixty-five and whatever the tax was.
The other question is, where is this going to fall in our master plan with what we just talked about prior to this discussion, the transfer from baseball to softball? If we move back. So what, how fast are you, are you also wanting to move on this? I see the call expires, one second.
Yeah, they're probably not going to be able to do any more work this winter, so, but I think they would like to get it in the draft list so they didn't really get scheduled.
So we could take no action on this and wait until our February main wants to get that plan figured out?
I'm just curious, do they give any sort of duration of the construction process?
Can you say that since we're here?
They thought that if they were able to get in this, like, this spring, they're trying to just, you know, narrow it down there. If they put it all to spring, they thought that it wouldn't be ready by the start of the season, but during the season, maybe play.
So they think the sod is going to go in by May, April?
It would be playable by this. And what we want to have it be played on, or if it's something that would cost spending $62,000, would you really want, like, have it played on before it was completely done? I don't know how sod works really, I don't specialize in that.
What are they doing for 62,000 dollars?
It's broken down.
Do you want a hard copy?
Yeah.
Like, Ken, as a former landscape guy, no sod will, throw it in in a month.
The other thing is too, if you're writing print, who's gonna water the sod? Make the staff on both sprinkling cans, no water out there. How do you plan on watering the sod?
Definitely would have to draw up a plan for that.
You know, the other thing too is, you know, the baseball field up here, not only used by the high school, I think our teenagers come up here and use it. The flat soil, I think, even dairy land might form up and sort of feel is not used down there, baseball. It's not just the high school.
Right.
And if anybody thinks that they've got a softball field out there, that's a view just for the high schools. It's not going to be that. And you just like the field now at the park, and kids' night, same type of stuff.
But we do have, I mean, we have evidence of a Title IX violation. We don't have equal playing surfaces for those two sports on this property. We don't. Then we need to not take away something, we need to make it... I don't disagree with my... This plan brought one to pay another, I don't, I don't know how you...
There are other places to do this. Other schools have put in base anchors and convert them both softball and baseball, while doing all this, for the anchors, you put them in there.
Yeah, we just can't, I, I agree with you. I think we need to come up with something.
Well, I don't think we can spend $62,000, and then we don't have a master plan, and then we do get the plan, we want to move the field, so throwing that $62,000 away. Okay, so.
Even looking at this, I'm still not clear on what they're doing.
Okay, how should I?
Is the existing field going to be?
Yeah, this is the part, this is the existing.
They want to do this for what reason?
Apparently, I guess, to make it so the girls have a practice field at the school.
No, 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 I don't understand why this field isn't where this field currently is, but the base of the bases...
That I don't know, this is the company that gave the bid.
Does anybody have an answer to that question?
What's your question, Bill?
We're entirely moving where the infield is, we're repositioning it. What's the reason for that?
Um, they're just building it to spec because typically, home plate is 25 feet from the backstop on a softball field, from what I understand. So the home, if you, like, let's just say you left the home plate, because home plate for softball and home plate for baseball are the same general thing, that you would be too far from the backstop if you were building a regulation field. It, I think it's too far probably for baseball also, but it would be really too far for softball. So they have to move it back substantially.
So they're trying, they're moving the field?
Oh, and for not softball, they put a small?
And don't forget the bases for a softball field are much smaller than base, for a softball are much smaller than baseball, so you're going to shrink the infield.
Who's gonna maintain it?
Maintain what?
Who's gonna, if we put in the money, who's gonna maintain that field? Because, I mean, I, I sat there last Wednesday and I thought, it's just very interesting to me because we got the letter, we had the meeting, we had the discussion, we went through all of the demands, and we've done a lot as a city to hit those demands. And now, we're presented with this when the quote was pulled back in November. So I just find it very interesting that not one comment was made last week, that this was something that was gonna be...
It's a possibility.
For both tonight, I, I'm sorry, it, that, that's just very, that's just very interesting to me because the biggest thing was the maintenance. They didn't want to maintain the fields. So we, you know, we got the quote of how much it would be if, if the city maintained it. So that's another question, who's gonna maintain that field out there? If we're gonna put that money in, who's gonna maintain it? Are we gonna have to hire a staff to maintain it, to rig it?
I, I guess I'm really confused by, we're, we're mixing up last week's meeting with this meeting?
Yes, last week's meeting and the park meeting was to discuss the softball fields. So it brings it into here because...
I thought that last week's meeting was to discuss the park and school contract, not the field.
It was to discuss the softball field, right?
Contract.
Yeah. Yes, the softball contract, like the contracts for those fields down there.
None of what is being proposed tonight has anything to do with the contract with the park.
But it has to do with the field and the park and the field that we're gonna be building here for the softball team because there's a Title IX that we are saying that it's, there's no girls' field, I understand that and I get that.
Okay, in my, in my opinion, and you may disagree with me, last week's discussion was about the contract. This discussion that we're having tonight is about the onsite facilities for the Waterloo School District. So this has nothing to do with the park or the park contract.
I disagree.
Do we still need, let's go here, do we still need the park contract if we have, for the, at least for the girls' field? If we have this built? Let's say that I win Magic One tomorrow, this is done, we spent the 62 grand. Do I even need to have a contract then with the city to use their car?
Yeah.
For the girls?
Uh, not for the boys, just for the girls. Baseball. That could be debatable, I guess, I think.
Well, I think that's what Sarah's getting.
I think we've heard from the coaches before that said if they had an onsite facility, that maybe they wouldn't use the park, but it's still needed for baseball.
Okay. So that makes your question or not?
Yeah, and I just didn't understand why this was not...
Sarah, did you have the letter last week?
I walked into the parks meeting and I did not have a chance to read it when I got there.
I walked in the same time you walked in.
I know, I'm saying, not that letter, I'm not concerned about the letter, I'm more concerned about us getting the quote on November 27th and then walking in last week, we're trying to come up with a conclusion of working together between the softball and the parks. Like, really, that, we were trying to amend and come together and come up with an agreement that they were happy with, that we were happy with, and, and be able to work together, and that was the biggest thing is, is, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with having a field here for the girls, but I think if we take it away, the boys, we need to make it possible for both, not just one. We all have to be equal here, and if we're gonna say that, then we have to have it, probably spend more money. And like Jim said, what about the water? What about the maintenance? Like, this is all stuff that's not on this quote, so.
I, I agree with you 100% Sarah. I think we, the Waterloo School District needs to figure out how to establish a softball field and a baseball field onsite for both of our programs.
And then that leads back into what we were just discussing before with getting our master plan set together in February. And we'll make over from there.
So, Jim, so maybe you mentioned getting advice and counsel on whether or not the title line obligations would be there, where do we plan on that?
We have it now.
Doesn't that seem like something that we should address before we start even entertaining?
It is.
Yeah.
Isn't, isn't that step number one, is what's the risk of a Title IX complaint?
I've had a few people reach out to me today asking where we're gonna get the $63,000 payers. Without having all the information in front of us with the Title IX and our master plan and all back, I don't feel, maybe we should run the $63,000 payment.
We need to have no choice, I know, I'm not even...
I don't disagree with that either.
And that's why we have no idea.
Yes, and that's why we, that's why we solicited advice and counsel, that's what they're there for. Otherwise, what happened? Now you're mildly looking in, but it's, it's worth it, what you think is.
Okay. Um, so, I haven't weighed in, but, so, the district's received a Title IX. It's really correspondence at this point, but it certainly has to be addressed and try not to co-mingle issues. I think it's a foregone conclusion to me specifically, even if we said tonight, let's go ahead and do this, I don't think it's ready and I don't think it's planned for next year. So you still have to have a place, a place to play next year, so you still need an agreement, which I'm not aware that we have an agreement yet, for our team to play on. Uh, we've already spoke that everyone was in agreement, we need a master plan, because I would have the same concerns, whether I'm for it or not, which I would say I'm totally for, own facilities for all sports on our property. But to stick a major investment in a field that we don't know if it's even in the right spot to facilitate future fields being built around that, I don't think that's an advisable position. So, to me, um, as we've already moved, we, we get a master plan in February, I don't know how you can move to a vote tonight to spend this money, as there's been much discussion, but I certainly think we need to keep it on the forefront of, um, you know, what's best for the district and our students, student athletes. So I've heard by Mr. Sets and Mr. Farry, they would like to, uh, for the terms of the letter, they've, his attorney has said, they would welcome to discuss the Title IX concerns with the district, and I've heard that you're in favor of that. Um, you have your list of what the district's already doing. I think the solicitation of this bid, when the district is faced with a complaint, is a way to satisfy that it become in compliance. So it's an option. I don't think we were heavy-handed, that we hadn't made a decision tonight, but here's an option and we have to know what we're getting into. So come February, as we've already moved, uh, we need to be pretty quick with how we look forward with the master plan. Because again, we're gonna invest funds, we need to make sure we're set up, that we can place this.
I gotta say one more thing. Ran a referendum, 500 and what, 90,000 dollars? Now that referendum passive was to what, to keep the lights on, keep staff, keep everything. If you think we're gonna go out there and put two fields into over $200,000, uh, if you got that kind of money, we should give it back to the taxpayers.
On the master plan thing, if, if we weren't gonna do the baseball fields, would we still want to do the master plan?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I would say that.
My assumption was yes, we don't have one.
So I would like to know what we'd do with it.
Right, I think that makes some sense off the top of my head.
How else do we come to taxpayers for money for, here's what we want to do, this is vital, of course.
Any other discussion?
Is that something that we can have, to Jim's point, a meeting about the letter?
I, yep, by all means, we can surface that at the meeting.
And who do we have for that same yet, does it?
Well, ma'am, I would move to table this discussion till after the board has an opportunity to discuss the Title IX letter with legal counsel.
I'm gonna use my second.
Okay. Can we set a date for that, tonight?
We just all went to the legal counsel, isn't it? On both sides, are we gonna have both sides, are we gonna have?
Well, usually, usually when you get advice and counsel, you listen to yours, not theirs.
I know, but it says in their letter that they're available to discuss, so would we want to have?
I, I would.
Would we have an opportunity to do it on the 18th when we already have a meeting scheduled with our counsel?
What, do we need 24 hours for that to be?
We need 24 hours for both things to...
So did, uh, did all board members hear that? Susan's proposed that we set this up for the 18th, as we're already probably previously scheduled to be here, I think.
And our counsel was already scheduled to be here as well.
All right, let's do it.
And then?
All right.
What, 9?
Do you want to go 4? We are currently set up for, is it 6 or 6:30?
6:30.
Can we go at 6?
6:50.
Yeah.
For meeting about Title IX with councils?
You're not gonna get it, Doug.
We're not gonna be able to meet with the same council we already have coming? Would you have to verify that?
Doug, he is not a Title IX expert, to my knowledge, I can ask him, but his student, student expulsion is essential to you. We have a Title IX attorney that the district works with, it's a different person.
Even if we can do, like, all of us meet at 6 and we call in or we call them and we can have a discussion, I don't know, Microsoft Teams or something, they can't physically be here.
Well, also, you don't necessarily have to, to meet with them to have a discussion, we can simply have them review it based on the current taxes known and get their opinion as to...
Well, I would like to, like, I mean, ask questions.
But my point is, we, I do this all the time, as, as an insurance claims guy, we're always doing this sort of thing. And before I would have a discussion with our attorney about anything, I would send them all the documentation, say, review it. Once you're done reviewing it, we're gonna discuss this on X date, or you get back to me after you've had a chance to review it. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't do a lot of good until they've actually had a chance to review it. You should, they may have to look at baseball, I don't, I don't know. But if I was them, I'd want to get an idea of what they're dealing with before talking to us, but I...
So do you want to reach out and see if they're available? And then we can, we can send them the Title IX complaint and all of the information so they're prepared if they put heat on Monday?
I don't thi...
I know.
I don't think it's gonna happen for Monday. I think we can offer it as the best case situation for Monday, maybe have a Zoom at 6 o'clock, but I wouldn't vote never up by these.
Well, and that was, are, are we responding to this attorney that sent this letter, or are we waiting? Like, because it says they would like, like, a quick response? So are we just waiting to respond until we can talk to our counsel? Is that, has anyone responded, have we given any response for this yet, or we'll be waiting?
Well, and more importantly, you know, again, there's, you know, there's eight items that have been identified as concerns and the administration has addressed seven of them, do you not want us to address them?
I, I guess I'm just asking how are you addressing them?
It's the worst question.
I know, I know, so, okay, so, like, the first one, it says, like, person taking the name of the school board. So we are, we are running that process and I understand all that, but I'm saying, so are you just sending her this and saying, this is how we're responding?
Well, 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 what's it you've taken care of? We've, we've incurred little or no or minimal cost in doing so, it's basically an effort, then, correct? Well, yeah, we certainly want you to do that, I would want you to do that as an aspect of just simply goodwill. There, the only issue that really any of us have ever, ever had with this is the amount of money that they want to spend to develop a new product. That's really the contentious issue, I don't know why you wouldn't go through with the stuff that you're already doing. Does anybody object to that?
I was just asking how the communication was going, going to their, their...
How, how do you want the communication to go?
I, I was just asking how it was gonna be done, have, do we have that yet? I mean, besides this, this work list, and I know you established that, that's fine, I'm just saying, is that what you're gonna send to them? And then say that we're working on, we're gonna have a master plan meeting on February, and we're gonna discuss fields? And then what if that doesn't happen, what if that doesn't go through, are we held liable to do a field, like?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So we got a motion on the floor, and Mr. Henning asked us to try to establish a date, but the motion on the floor is to table this action item until the board can review with legal counsel.
If my notes are correct.
Yes.
That was my motion, correct.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? We talked about Monday at nine, or Monday, excuse me, doesn't sound like that's very feasible, we do have holidays coming up. I guess what we can do is ask for admin to get us some dates that are possible, and try to schedule. So, all those in favor of tabling until the board can review a legal counsel, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, the motion is tabled. Move forward, uh, the action item F, this is the first reading of the three thousands and the six thousand policies. Any discussion regards to the three thousands or six thousands? Uh, as stated previously, anything you see on this list that's crossed out, was asked for clarification or modification, and we've not received it yet. So we have the ability to approve as presented, and address the crossed out ones on the second reading, or we can pull them from a motion approving through the first, to the board. Again, just so you're aware, uh, it's not like we revoke the policies, we might have tweaked a word or a sentence, or asked for a few things, nothing major. All of the policies have been very thorough, as presented. Any discussion?
All quickly, readings of the three thousand, six thousand, first reading of the policies.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Sets, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve the first reading of the three thousand and the six thousand related policies, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries on a seven voice vote. Brings us to action item H, lockdown school intruder drill. Um, again, it's just a discussion item. The drill was conducted on the twenty-seventh at two P M. Students and staff were taught to run, hide, fight, alisk, and use options based on responses to school intruder threats. This was held, and students were picked up down at the fire in this park pavilion, students in grades first through twelve participated. Any discussion or questions in regards to the drill?
How are the goal, here to be able to go down there at the park, or?
It was pretty good.
Yep. Parents showed up on time.
Yeah.
What do we tell them for the fight portion of this? Run and hide, I did, but, we.
Did you hear the question?
What do we tell them for the fight portion of the run, hide, fight? What, is there a scenario that we give them where? Supposed to tackle that?
The, the premises is built on the fact that you can distract, you control things, um, we don't necessarily encourage trying to tackle them or subdue them, but that is part of it. Um, whatever you can do to maximize survivability.
Four pairs and kindergarten did participate, they just didn't go down to the park in this. Hundred and ten percent, my daughter was. Yeah, hundred percent, 'cause you, you have to teach them to, like, go into the bathroom and then, yeah, yeah. And then they have to learn about, like, screaming, you know, obviously, you know, so, it's a lot for a little four-year-old to be like, what is going on? And then talk about bad people, and, yeah, so, I mean, the teacher did amazing, so it was not on her at all, it was just the, teaching the kid that they, yeah.
I'm glad we did it.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Moving right along, we'll go, again, a discussion item of the school board election dates, as presented in the interim packet. Deadline for non-candidacy is the December twenty-second. Uh, the office will be closed on the twenty-second, so you need to get in there prior to that, by four fifteen on the twenty-first. Deadline for new candidates is January second. And again, the office closes at four fifteen, so the candidates are asked to arrive prior. Any discussion on school board election dates?
How many seats are up this year?
Two.
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 All right, my long, uh, session item J, administrative contracts, January is the month that administrative contracts should be reviewed by the school board, according to state statute. All six administrative contracts will be on the agenda for January. Any discussion regarding administrative contracts? Okay, here are none. I will make the motion to move into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, here in one, here in C, for the purposes listed in our motion. Is there a second to that motion? That is your rule, Paul, vote. Cray, yes, Jerry.
Merry Christmas, Mr. Broads.
Sets, yes.
Yes, let the time show, seven forty-eight P M. And we will take a ten-minute free recess to allow cameras to be taken down, et cetera. Thank you.